Steven, you good? Thank you. We will call to order the committee of the whole meeting. Can we begin with roll call, please?
Councilmember Shumers. Dederman. Sealy.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Obrin.
Here.
Musman.
Here.
Curtains.
Here.
All right. Is Chief McQuishon gonna kick this one off?
Yeah.
All right.
Mayor, councilmembers. Mike McQuishon, Fire Chief. Thanks for allowing us the opportunity tonight to present to you the new rental program. But before we do that, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Rich Foley and the team that he assembled for doing all the hard work. We wanted to bring the best plan forward to you. So he had some external stakeholders give their opinion. We went through legal to get theirs. And I think that the program that we have before you is gonna help improve our efficiency, decrease the burden on property managers and owners, and overall be, help defray the cost of the rental program. So I hope that we gave you the information and plenty of time that you were able to review it. I know that 38 pages seems like a lot of information. A lot of it was administrative changes, not a lot on changes of the program. I will let Rich Foley highlight those changes. You will. Thank you. So, Mayor, City Council, my name is Rich Foley. I'm a deputy building official for the Building Safety Division. So what happened was, is Chief McQuishon presented to me the question of can we move away from a two-year rental program and look at something different? What I did is working with stakeholders in the community who are very active, I put together a work group. The work group consisted of Stacy Parks from Pro Management Realty. She manages about 320 rental units in the city of Clinton. Sandy Petrie, Lee Rup, Assets LLC, she manages about 140, owns actually 140 rental units in the city of Clinton and six businesses. Mary Nolan and Hope Hall from Clinton Properties LLC, unfortunately, they're unable to make it today. Kathy Sewell from Sewell Properties, she manages about 32 units. And I also had Corey Hunigan from Mill Creek. Mill Creek owns several properties throughout this region with 100 rental units in the city of Clinton. So that work group worked with my office in identifying a program of a four-year tier program with yearly registration, which you see in front of you that was presented. That was presented through the dedication and hard work of that group, and I want to thank them for all their guidance on that. So that's what was presented to the council for review, was what came out of that work At this point in time, I was gonna see if we had any questions, or do we need to highlight any of the changes? How would the council...
Councilmember Obrin?
I'd like to hear all the changes, you know, the significant changes, maybe some history of this is why we changed it.
Okay.
You know, just, this was the justification, let's say, of why we updated this, modified this, just so that we can hear it, and so frankly, the public can hear it, too.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, the main thing we looked at was, is the little bit of history is in 2019, the rental code was modified at the same time the International Property Maintenance Code was adopted in that timeframe. Lot of the verbiage remained in the rental code that specifically just said dwelling. So at legal's guidance, and you should have a report that Doug Herman from Lynch Dallas put with what we presented, they wanted to better define and remove a lot of redundancies and make clearer identification of what this code applies to. So a lot of the changes you see are just administrative changes, changing a dwelling to a rental dwelling. So a lot of it would be just clarification on some of that stuff. One of the big changes that you'll see at the beginning is under definitions, is we did create some definitions of what an authorized agent is. Deputy building official, we put a definition in there as that. A manager and a licensee, because part of the new rental program that we're recommending is actually a yearly registration. That is a big change from a biannual to a yearly registration. Under the definitions, we redefine what a rental is. And one of the reasons why is I was presented, I went out and did an initial inspection, and I was asked this question by the tenant. She goes, "I've lived here for 40 years. Now my property is a rental." And I asked her what had changed. She says, "Well, I'm 80 years old, 79 years old. I put the property in my son's name because I did not want my property to be lost if something happens to me. I want it to go to my son." Under our current definitions of a rental, that makes that property a rental because it's not occupied by the person on the deed. So working with legal, we came up with a new definition that eliminates those from the rental program. So if you have a mom or a dad who buys a property for their child, or if you have a child who buys a property for their parents or a sibling, that does not have to meet rental code. That was something we felt was important to give, to bring to the council for review because that is one of the things I do hear a lot of concerns, complaints about on new rentals, is why does this have to be a rental when I've owned it for 20 years and I just put it in my son's name? Or I bought this for my child, why do I have to have it as a rental? Or I moved to Arizona and my family's still saying in my, the, you know, home we've had, but now it's a rental. So that's one of the reasons we changed that. Some of the other things we changed was we eliminated, again, we eliminated the biannual. We went to a yearly registration. The yearly registration, the big reason when we discussed that as a team, one of the biggest problems we have is tracking properties as they sell. Right now, what happens is, is we go out every biannual, so every two years. And part of the notice to the property owner that inspection's coming up is the bottom of the form says, "Hey, if there's been any changes, if you got a new manager, if you've sold the property, please notify us." There's also a section of the ordinance that requires new rental property owners to notify us that they've purchased a rental, so we know who to mail updated records or notices to. It doesn't take place very often, so a lot of times, our staff is chasing down new property owners to identify them. So the yearly registration assists us in identifying property changes when they sell. The other thing we looked at was the cost of managing and administering a rental program. Currently, when I go out for a rental inspection, there's a fee for that. It's $40 per building, $15 per unit. So a single-family home would be $55. If I come out and that property fail, I'm sorry, if that property passes, that fee is cut in half to $27.50. If that property fails and I have to come back out for another inspection, it's another $55. So depending on if the property passes or fail, more fees would be generated. So when this work group, we discussed fees, and it came, the discussion ended up being a yearly registration, cutting the fees about in half. We had to raise them a little bit. Our fees have not been raised since 2014. So working with the chief, we looked at the statistics, and we, the fees are gonna be raised a little bit, but to ensure we don't put the burden on the property owners, we eliminated the inspection fees. So what we presented is inspections every four years. There'll be a yearly registration with a fee, but when I come out to do an inspection, there's no fee for that. If the property fails and I come out for another inspection, there's no fee for that. The only time there's additional fees is if I have to come out a third time or a fourth time. If the property owner misses an inspection, or there's a late cancellation, there's fees. But there will be no fees on the inspections as long as the owner can either pass the first time or the second time. Some of the other changes we did is, under definitions, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, back up. Under requirements, we went further down and we put in their gas engines. We run into a lot of rentals now where they're stowing lawnmowers. I had a rental a couple months ago where they actually had a motorcycle parked in their living room because they didn't want to park it outside. That's a continuing problem, so we added a definition, or I'm sorry, we added a requirement to make sure that gas-powered engines are not left in rentals. The other part of what we added under that section is a section talking about disconnecting or having water or power shut off. Currently, the Property Maintenance Code states that, under 108, states that you cannot live in a property that lacks illumination, lighting, lacks hot and cold running water. And then when you get in chapters 500 and 600, it better defines, you gotta have hot and cold running water, it sinks in bathing areas. But when you read the rental code, it really did not spell that out, so there was a lot of confusion on what happens if my water's shut off? What happens if my power's shut off? So we added a section into the code to better define that, to put it in one location, so I don't have people having to go to three or four different locations. Some of the other things we looked at was, on the four-year program, to be honest with you, we looked at Dubuque. What you see on the yearly registration and what you see on the tiered program is right out of Dubuque's ordinance. And all we did, working with Pat in his office, is we tweaked that down to fit Clinton. What we felt was important would be, when we do the tiered program, that's going to be a presentation that we're gonna give to the council via resolution, so as we continue to roll this out, if we identify issues or concerns or problems, we can then come back to the council and via resolution, that three-tiered program under the four-year cycle can be tweaked to better fit what we see in the community, which is what Dubuque is doing. Actually, right now, Dubuque is working through changing their three-tiered program because they've run into some issues. And they find it easier to do that via resolution than opening up the ordinance. So that's one of the big changes, is that the rental program is not spelled out into the ordinance. It'll be presented to council by the fire chief via resolution. So the council still has control over it. The council still has the ability to dictate how that program looks, but it'll be part of a resolution and not spelled out in the code, so it can be amended as the council sees fit as we continue to bring issues with them. Other than that, the yearly registration, and I apologize for hopping around, the yearly registration, when we discussed that as the team, we looked at, right now, it's gonna start December. So if a property owner needs to register their rental every year, the occupancy permit or their license will expire every January 1 or December 31st. So the owner will have the full month of December to register their rentals, and then they'll have January and February to register their rentals. After March 1, they'll start some penalty processes. April 1, there'll be more penalties, and then May 1, the penalties continually rate up. So the idea behind it is, is owners can register in December, all the way through the end of February. We're going to implement, like, whatever the council deems is the appropriate way to move forward with this, my goal is, is this November, December, I'm gonna have a landlord come together, where we get all the landlords together, and if we move to a yearly registration program, we're gonna walk through all the landlords that first year. So we're gonna register all the landlords that first year, we're going to walk them through the process. And then after that, the goal is, is they'll be able to go online on our website and register their rentals every year. We'll have to do a little bit of tweaking on our website, but they'll also be able to pay their licensing on the website.
Oh, cool.
That's the goal. What we would have to do is, we would have to work with our IT department and the city clerk's office to make sure all that works that way. But we already have the payment availability through finance, so we would just be able to use that ability through that. So then they would be able to register their rentals starting in December, all the way through March 1, online, make their payment online, and then they'll get their yearly license and they're valid for that calendar year. Any questions or concerns? I apologize for kinda hopping around.
So... So if somebody, say, their inspection comes up October, you go through it, do it all, and then you go to the new system, November, March, whatever, will that fee carry over for them for that next year, or...
That is our recommendation. So what would happen is, any property owner that has paid an inspection for this year, that will be their registration for next year.
Okay.
So then they would kinda get a buy for one year. And what, the, part of the goal of the landlord meeting in November is, for example, Stacy Parks, I'm not gonna pick on Stacy, but she has 320 units. She doesn't want all of them scheduled in one year. So what we would do then is, we would look at spreading them out over that four. So Stacy may have some inspections that happen this year, but we're mail, blood again next year and do them again to get them on that four-year cycle. But since there's no fees for those inspections, they're not going to create any more billing for them. Some may, instead of being a two-year, they may go a three-year. So what we would do is, we would roll this out, and when the council makes the determination of what they feel is the best, then we will roll that out, working with our landlords. So again, we may have some landlords that are on a two-year, a three-year, a one-year, but their fees paid this year will cover the registration for next. And if they have an inspection coming up next year, their registration that they do now will cover the fees next year.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
Yeah. No. One other question.
Yes, sir.
If a son, if a father buys a house for a son or a daughter or whatever, do you verify that they're actually relatives, or are you just gonna take their word for it?
Unless, unless we have reasons to believe that they're being false, I'm not going to ask for any verification, other than maybe a statement in writing that they meet the code.
That's true.
I don't wanna automatically take somebody as being, you know, providing a false statement. So I do have a form already somewhat created that they could fill out for that exemption. And then all we would ask is that they would fill that form, and then we would keep that on file. Then later on, if we get a complaint that shows that they did not, they weren't truthful, then at that point in time, working with legal, we would take whatever appropriate action we needed to bring that property into compliance.
Yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Sealy?
Thank you, sir. Rich, is there gonna be like a sheet? I know, like, the property score is 80 or above and stuff. How's that gonna, can you explain that a little bit?
Yes. We use a program called Municity. It's a web-based program. Currently, right now, in Municity, there are 34 questions that every time we do a rental inspection, those 34 questions are answered. What, working with Municity, working with the fire chief, you're gonna put a weight on each question. So for example, you're gonna start with 100. If I come out and you have a non-functioning smoke alarm, that's gonna drop you down to 89, which means if you're above 90, you pass. 80 to 89, you need a re-inspect. So then what would happen would be, is automatically, you would fail and you would have a re-inspect. However, as you see in the ordinance, we do allow video submission, so the owner could submit a video of a new smoke alarm or the smoke alarm functioning, and then that would pass it, and then that, that property would continue to stay within the four-year program. We have a property that drops below 80, then there'd be a remedial program that's gonna be part of the presentation we give to council, and that remedial program could mean that they're kept on a two-year, or they're maybe even a one-year. And then their goal would be is to get them back to a four-year cycle. And that would all be done through the weighting of our questions. So if I come in, if I fail a property because it's got a dripping faucet, that's a point. That's not gonna drop them to a failure. If I come out and they've got peeling paint on a window, that's a point. That's not gonna drop them to failure. If I come out and I've got peeling paint on a window that is now decayed where I can stick my finger through the trim, that could be a failure where they would have to repair it before the property passed, but they would stay on the four-year if they made that repair in a timely manner, as outlined in the...
And I'm, everything's fine. I'm just trying to grasp everything, 'cause it's all different now. Okay, let's say you're on the four-year cycle. What gets you down, what actually takes place to get you to that two or that one-year cycle?
There'd be a lot of different factors. What I put in there for quality assurance is, no property can be moved from a four-year to a two-year without vetting and approval from the fire chief or the building official. Example would be, is, I can't give addresses, of course, but I had a property that had a porch that, two years ago, I said, "This porch is becoming unsafe. It's safe right now, but it's becoming unsafe. You need to make this repair." The owner submitted a report, or a plan of repair on that porch. I came back out for the biannual, and the porch had not been repaired. The porch had decayed to the point where now it was pulling off the property. So I failed that property, and I'm still dealing with that property, and that property was actually condemned because the porch was collapsing. That would go to a two-year because I have a history of lack of maintenance, I have a dangerous situation. So even once he gets the porch fixed, we're gonna wanna go out in two years to make sure everything else is being maintained okay. Then, once we go out and everything's good to go and he passes, he gets a score of 80 or higher, then he's gonna progress to the four-year. But the quality assurance is, it's not my determination or the inspector's determination, it's a quality assurance through the chief that we have to be able to show the preponderance of the inspections warrant a drop to the two-year. The other examples I can give is, I have a couple properties that they don't, it takes six months to get them to pass. I'm out there four or five or six times just to get them to that minimum level where they can pass. Those properties would probably remain on a two-year with the permission of the chief because four years would be just too detrimental to the property. A lot of it would be case by case. I really don't envision that many properties on two-years.
Okay.
I really don't. Because I have a really good pool of property owners that may not agree with everything that my office does, but they maintain their properties and they take care of them, and they pass when I come out. The two-year is gonna be for those ones that you, as the council, drive by and you're like, "Wait a minute, how is that property getting by? How is that property passing?" The reason being is, right now, if they meet that minimum, minimum, minimum standard, they pass because I'm, they know I'm coming out any year, because a lot of times, it takes me nine months to get it to pass. Those are the ones that'll stay on a two-year because we definitely don't wanna put them in a four-year.
Okay. Cool. Councilmember Curtains?
So, Rich, I think when you guys finally brought a couple more people into that meeting, I think you guys said something, and it was a pretty high number, and I don't remember if it was 75 or 90 or whatever, but that many percentage of your rentals would automatically be able to go to a four-year at that point in time. Was it 75%? You said like 75%.
87% of the properties that I inspect fail the first inspection. However, we felt that at least, and I have the stat, but it's in the book, we felt that it would be about 95% of the properties would automatically be able to go to a four-year.
So how are you gonna disperse those out so you guys, or is it like, if they are almost up to two years, then they'll get done in, you know, next year? How are you guys gonna work all that out?
So what'll happen would be, is I will prioritize by concerns with the property. For example, would be, is the property that I just mentioned about the porch, I'm going out next Monday to do an inspection. If that property passes, then I'll go out in two years. It'll actually be less than two years, it'll be about a year and a half because... Because what we do is we go by when their certificate of occupancy expires. We don't want any time where they're not covered because then that falls under issues with federal funding, if they get federal funding or anything else like that. So we always make sure there is no gaps in their certificate of occupancy. But what we would look at is we would look at the state of the property and when's the last time we visited the property or we were out there. And then the goal would be is we would present that to the command staff with a prioritization, we would identify the ones that we feel we need to go out sooner on because they haven't been looked at in a year or a year and a half.
Good.
The big thing is the quality assurance. I want, like, I can't say, I, I'm sorry. We want to eliminate those concerns about, you know, "I'm working with this inspector, I'm going to get this. I'm working with that inspector, we get this." We've got to be consistent. The best way to do that is to have that quality assurance. So we've tied in that quality assurance with the licensing program and with the inspection program. Everything has to be vetted through command. And as you know, command gets their guidance from Matt, who gets his guidance from council. So the goal is, is there's going to be that quality assurance of, if I'm taking a property, going to take it to a two-year from a four-year, that's vetted through the building official, which is Eli Voss, and signed off or approved by the chief. So there's going to be more eyes on these properties to identify those concerns. The other part of it's going to be is moving to a two-year or a four-year is going to also be the same thing. We're going to have it set, the owner's going to know exactly what they need to do to get to a four-year. So we're going to have a plan. They invite the owners in, we're going to sit down, come up with a plan. A plan will be put in place, and they'll know exactly what they need to do to get to a four-year.
Rich, can you go through the tier system there? And is that the point system? Is that what's going to get them into tier one, two, or three? Or is there different criteria or?
There's different criteria in some aspects of it. So a point one-plus is a property that's 12 or over. Example would be is if I go to the landing, which is 297 units, I believe, the landing. If I go out to the landing right now, we inspect every unit. We go through every unit. And so what would happen was, the landing would be a tier one-plus. So if I come out on year four, they present a self-inspect report that they went through all the units, then we will do 20%. If they pass that 20%, they stay on a four-year, and then they get a reduction in their registration fee for that four-years because they're maintaining the property and they're over 12. And that, we picked that number, again, that was something that we talked to Dubuque about, and that's something they picked. But usually 12 or more I need help on. That's where we have to pull fire department in, we have to pull other inspectors. Karen from the offices had to come out of the office to help me do rental inspections. Ginger. So over 12, self-inspect, 20%. If they pass, they remain on that tier one-plus. Tier two is properties that are below 12 units, but can, but maintain maintenance, and they pass. So they're going to be on a four-year. Tier three properties are the properties that are on a two-year or one-year. So tier three are, and I hate to say it this way, but I'm going to say it this way, tier years, tier three is kind of the worst of the worst, the ones that need a lot of the TLC, need a lot of the work. Tier two are properties that are being maintained and are passing, but they're small. They're under 12. Tier one-plus is 12 or over. Sarah Harding, all the retirement homes on 13th Avenue North, the landing, Cottage Bluff, Washington Apartments, Block Apartments, Van Allen, Armstrong, those are all over 12. They would all be in that tier one-plus.
So a house can't be a tier one, then?
House cannot be a tier one. They can be a tier two.
Okay.
So...
Does the tier affect the fee schedule at all?
Only the larger complexes. Because if we don't have to devote all the staff to going through it, we felt it was important to give an incentive. So the incentive was is, at the guidance of the council, a reduction in their fee on those large complexes. If the landing passes, and instead of sending four people out there for a day, it's me going out there for two hours, they get a little reduction in fee.
So it's basically just classifying units, not determining fee based on a tier?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. Fair enough.
And it spells out in the tiers exactly what you need to do. So a tier three property would need to go through, get inspected. If they pass, there may be self-inspections, there may be other things that take place, and that would be property-to-property determination, working with a plan with the owner. And then tier, the tier three spells out that if I come out and they pass, then I come out again and they pass, now they're on that four-year. They're a tier-two property. They remain a tier-two property as long as they don't slide back and have issues. A tier-two property could be a unit that's 12 or over that I did their 20% and they failed, and I did their 20% and they failed. So now I've, we've got to do all of them so they don't get that tier-three where they do the self-inspect. So there may be a tier-two where they're going to be, the whole complex is inspected, and they don't get that reduction in fee. Example, and again, not to pick on a property, but example I can give you would be is Lyons Creek would be a tier-three property. The best Lyons Creek would probably be able to do, once they open back up for a few years, would be a tier-two. It would be a while before they would be able to get to tier-three.
And that would be just because all the units would have to be inspected in the tier-two?
Correct.
Okay. And I didn't compare a lot of it in here, but I'll just ask. All the same right to appeal and all that kind of stuff remains in this new one? Nothing changed on that front?
That is correct. And actually, we, through legal, Doug Herman, we actually made sure that the appeal process was actually written in the licensing and also in the tier program. There is that right to appear.
Okay.
And that would all be to the housing work deals.
Right. Any other discussion from council? I know we have a lot of property owners here. Is there anybody that has questions at this time?
What's the actual fee going to be? That is based in there, and that was put in there. I could definitely give you a copy of that if it's not in your packet.
Here you go, right here.
It's right up on the screen there for you.
Thirty-five dollars.
So...
I think.
So a single-family, tier one and two would be, yeah, 25 per building, 10 per unit. And currently, it's 40 per building, 15 per unit.
Technically, it's 27.50, right?
If you pass, first time, yes, 27.50. Yes, that's correct.
And the new proposal would be the same, even if you pass, the rate would still stay the same?
As far as pass or fail, it's a yearly registration, so there would be no... At this point in time, we are not recommending or presenting to the council they cut in fee if you pass because we're moving to that yearly licensing. That is something that definitely the council can add back if they feel at this point in time. What we looked at, and gee, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, what we looked at is what our current operational budget is for the rental program or the rental department. And we looked at all the buildings we had in the city of Clinton, and we kind of broke that down into the lowest fee we can get where the chief felt comfortable with budgetary. That's another part of the yearly registration. And by March one, we should have a majority of what we're going to be getting in that year in. So the city's going to have a better idea by March one what the rental program is bringing in, so they can help plan the budget a little bit better. But that's what we looked at. We tried to not raise it too much, but at the same time, to a point where it covers the fees.
Yeah, I really felt that, again, we haven't raised our fees in a long time, and I think that we're behind the eight ball compared to other cities. But we really felt that the general taxpayers shouldn't have to pay for rental property ownership of other people. So we wanted the majority of the fee schedule to defray the cost of it. That's really how that was derived.
How many units are there again, Rich? Approximately?
Approximately 40. Sorry, it's been a long day.
Forty-two hundred and fifteen.
Pardon?
Forty-two hundred and fifteen.
There's approximately...
He's the one that told me.
Yeah, yeah.
It changes over.
Yes. There's, yeah, 4250. Currently, for example, and I broke it down a little bit. Last year, I did 27, I did 2,770 inspections.
Okay.
That's a lot of inspections.
And out of that, we had an 86.4% failure rate. The hard to get into the exact numbers is our system, right now, only gives us buildings, not units. So we only have about 2,800 buildings that are rentals in the city of Clinton. But when we use our old system to get to the numbers, that's where we get the units.
Okay.
So it's hard to give a unit. I can tell you that probably over the last year, we've added about 400 units to the city's role. Valley Bluff, and they finished out of College Bluff.
Yep.
So, yeah, it's about 40, 42, 4300 units within the city of Clinton. Yes, sir.
Mike?
Would there be any consequences to the renters if they tamper with the smoke detectors?
Yes. So it's tied in, and I do it already. Right now, tampering with the smoke alarm, once it's up, is $100 fine, $95 court costs, I do issue tenants' citation. What I need at the request of the court, and Pat might be able to expound on that a little bit, is I need a lease or something showing that they signed and the smoke alarm worked when they moved in. So what I normally do is if I run into a situation where there's been tampering with smoke alarms, I'll ask the property owner for a copy of the lease. They'll email that to me, and then I use that, I issue that citation, and I put that paperwork with the citation. So if they go to court and say, "That's the way it was when I moved in", I've got that paperwork that they issued. But it is spelled out in the code that they can't tamper with it. That is, that was not going to move. That is actually in there. And we do have a scheduled fine of 100 with $95 court costs.
For, for, for smoke detectors?
For smoke detectors. Normally, I don't do first smoke detector. I just do one for the property, but it is first smoke.
Did you say there's 34 questions I can look at?
34, yes.
Can you go up? Is it possible to get a copy of that?
Oh, most definitely, yeah. Yes. I can, shoot me an email. I can email it to you. Or I don't have a copying machine with me now, but you stop, definitely give me a copy of it.
All right. Any other, oh, Councilor Sealy, go ahead.
I just sparked, I thought I saw a comment in here that you guys were going to work on a checklist or something for landlords?
The checklist is already in place.
Oh, okay.
What the question was, asked of me by the chief, is there was a question about a checklist that covers like the installation of a fire extinguisher, where smoke detectors go. We have individual fact sheets on all that stuff, but to put it in a checklist, it would be 60 pages.
Yeah.
We do have a checklist on the website that they can download. It was brought to my attention a couple, maybe a month or so ago, that there was some issues that that checklist might not have been able to get downloaded or viewed. I worked with the city clerk's office, and that checklist should be functioning correctly.
What's that checklist? Just a general, like, I'm looking at these?
A general overview of what we looked at.
Okay.
What we look at.
Perfect.
It's a very general overview.
Well, it just helps give them a little indicator of what you're going to look at.
Yes, but you're not supposed to, if somebody's mounting a fire extinguisher, is it a five-pound?
Yep.
What weight it is determines how high it's off the ground.
Yep.
You know, 44. So we felt if we put that all in the checklist, the checklist would be so big, everybody would get confused by it.
Yep.
So we have individual check sheets. So if somebody contacts my office and says, "I got a five-pound fire extinguisher. How do I mount it?", I've got a form I can mail out to them. Where the smoke detectors go, we've got a sheet that we can mail out to them or provide.
Okay.
I guess I got a couple questions.
You should, if you got a couple, you'll have to come up to the mic just so the people online can hear you. And state your name for the record, even though we know you.
Travis Winters, 2328 North H Street. I guess I have a question on third-party rental inspections. I know I've brought it up in the past, and I'm going to continue to do it. I see it's in the new, in the new packet. How does it work? And I haven't got a clear answer.
We're going to get one right now. Travis, here they come.
Yeah, there's a policy that we have on third-party inspections, and you have to qualify as a third-party inspection. I'm fairly certain that I provided that policy to you for your review. We've had nobody come and ask to be a third-party inspector, so.
Well, I guess the question is, if I decide to do, that I want a third-party inspection, how is this supposed to be done? Then am I, am I forced to come up with it? Or is the city supposed to provide people that do the third-party rental inspections?
And that's why, that's why we ask for qualified inspectors to do third-party inspections because they'll have the appropriate documentation and have to follow the same thing that the city has adopted as far as what you're inspecting.
It's on you to come up with the inspection. So there are two on the policy that's a bit specific.
The policy that the chief was referring to spells out that they took it out of the administrative sections of the International Property Maintenance, I'm sorry, the International Code Council Administrative Guidelines. Any party or any person who owns a property that does home inspections or type of inspections, submit their qualifications to the city, say that they're interested in doing third-party inspections. That would then go to our chief building official and the fire chief. They would review it, make sure the person, the lease has the minimum qualifications that, for example, if it's a rental inspection, they got to meet the minimum qualifications. And I have to meet as the inspector, International Property Maintenance Code. They present their paperwork, they vestish. Once they present and they get vested, if a property owner calls up and says, "Hey, do you have any people that present?", we have no problem saying, "Yeah, ABC Home Inspections does it." We don't actively go out and dig around and try to find somebody because when we look at that, the other community in Iowa does it. It's always one of those things where the person would submit to the city, "I want to do third-party inspections. Here's my qualifications." They're vetted, they're approved from there. They can work with the property owners. They can do whatever they feel they want to do within the city. But that's the process spelled out. And the policy procedure is that companies in Davenport would present to the city, "Here's my qualifications. They will approve, and then they can do the third-party inspections."
Next question. I see in the packet, it talks about administrative search warrants. And I cringe when I see that administrative search warrants would be in a rental inspection. So as far as I'm aware, you have to have probable cause for administrative search warrants. Is that correct?
The administrative warrant process works on a probable cause basis. So, you know, if a landowner, a property owner is just recalcitrant and says, "You can't, I'm not going to permit you on the property", and the person renting it doesn't allow access, then we've got to go to a court and say, "We have probable cause to believe there's a violation of the code in this rental unit, and we've got to get permission, we've got to get a warrant signed by the judge to allow that administrative search." Right? In other words, to do the inspection that's due that isn't being permitted.
So the question I...
That's typically how the city of Clinton always handles those things. You know, if either the person living in the unit who's had the complaint, they say, let's say they say, "My sink is leaking", and they won't fix it or whatever, we would need an affidavit that says that we have that information, and we would take that to the court, and the court would say, "Go ahead." Oftentimes, you know, the renter will say, "That's fine. Go ahead. Come on in." Right? If the owner doesn't. And as you know, we don't, we don't need necess, we just need the person in possession to give us permission. But if neither the person in possession nor the owner wants to give access, then we've got to go get a warrant.
So...
Right? And most, most property owners that rent are more than happy to give access, and they don't, that shouldn't be an issue very often. But that's how it would work if somebody was literally like, "No, we're not going to, we're going to bar access." We're never going to tell our guys to just go right on in regardless of what they're saying. We've got, if you're literally saying, "I don't give permission", then we're going to treat it like a Fourth Amendment situation. If we don't have probable cause, we're going to have to back off until there's a complaint and the, and the renter says, "Okay, now I'm okay with it", because now it's... I'm okay with it," because now it's bad enough at all.
That was my question. So, if a, if a renter doesn't want it, and you have no probable cause, then you're saying you're backing off until you have probable cause to file for the search warrant?
Well, unless the...
You've still got your inspection.
I think the confusion is... I'm sorry, I don't want to do that.
Go ahead.
I think the confusion is, is, and I think what Mr. Winter was trying to ask is, if I go up and knock on a property...
Slide over to the microphone.
If I go up to a property and knock on a door, there's always kind of this spiel, I say, "My neighbor, Rich Foley, Inspector of the City of Clinton, if you're going to do a rental inspection, you might have to come in." I always ask that, I always say that stuff. If somebody says to me, "No, you can't come in," and the only thing I'm there is for a bi, for a biannual currently, I don't get an administrative search warrant, I don't look for an administrative search warrant. What I do is I reschedule it, and then I give them another notice, and I give them the ability to understand why I'm coming out. If they continue to refuse me entry, then their occupancy permit, currently their occupancy permit is not renewed, the property is no longer rental, and ultimately, it has to be vacated because it's not meeting rental code. There's no administrative search warrant process involved in that, because the only violation I have is refusing entry. If somebody calls up and says, "The ceiling in my living room's collapsing, and I'm afraid it's going to hurt my family," and I go out there and the property owner says, "You can't go in," I'm going to get an administrative search warrant to go into that property to look at that ceiling to make sure it's safe. So there's administrative policies on hold. If they refuse me entry just on a biannual, we're not going to get an administrative search warrant, they're just not going to be renewed, and the property ultimately has to be vacant, and the tenant has to leave. Then the owner can step back in and say, "You know what? That tenant's gone, come on out, I do my inspection, they pass, we move forward." If the owner's the one that says, "No, you can't come in," then they don't get the rental occupancy, they don't, they're not a rental again, and the property cannot be rented. So there's really no reason for that administrative search warrant in that process. The issue is, is we've got to spell out in our ordinance, and correct me if I'm wrong, Pat, we've got to spell out in ordinance that we have the right to apply for an administrative search warrant under probable cause to be able to do it.
Of course, right. And that's, that's a very good...
You explain that way better than Pat, thank you.
That was good.
My job is only to give legal advice, okay?
Third question?
Just the last question.
All right.
I've had some landlords and tenants question, code enforcement wearing body cams inside the unit, because we all know that, you know, body cam footage can be, I can do a FOIA request and get body cam footage from that property, and now I've got access to, I've got pictures of everything in the whole unit. So there is kind of a safety issue with that.
I asked Pat about this and was told that that footage is not public.
Well, there's, you know, there's a, chapter 22.718 talks about the type of information that no one would probably give the government unless it was not just available to the general public. This is one of those situations. If you're a landlord, the last thing you want is, you know, the condition of a property that might not be great, being out there in the news media. So, it's not that to say that it wouldn't eventually get out, because if there was a trial or something, like, let's say, there was a really bad property and we had to go to court, then it might get out under those circumstances, where the owner themselves is, is there, and the renter is maybe testifying about the condition, or Rich, or Eli, or somebody is testifying about it, then you're going to, then it has to be produced, right? To both the defendant and to the judge and to everyone involved in the case. But we don't, we don't give that out, because we don't feel that 22.718, we think 22.718 typically makes that confidential.
So if a property's in good shape, and, so let's say Scott lives in a rental property, and I get mad at Scott, and I know he had an inspection done, and I want to find out what he's got in his house, I can't get that video, correct?
Not unless you end up in a court of law with him.
Okay.
You know, or something like that, or, yeah, that'd be basically the reason why you'd get it. You'd get it under subpoena, or if you needed it for a legal reason, you'd get it.
No, but just for being nosy.
Yeah. No, not just for being nosy. And the reason is, our legis, I think our legislature wants, you know, rental inspectors like Rich to be able to have information and keep good, solid, reliable information about properties. And he, and I think our legislature knows that he wouldn't get that information, to get that kind of cooperation at all, if people thought it was going to be in the Clinton Herald. You know, they were going to describe what's in the video, or they were going to put it on the TV for people to look at, so.
With the cooperation with the police department, the body camera that I wear is actually a Clinton Police Department equipment. I only have access to the video to tag it, to say, "This address and what's in the video, rental inspection or whatever." After that, that is evidence by the police department, the police department has full control over that as evidence. I can't modify it, I can't release it, I can't do anything with it. The other part, one of the main reasons, is I've been doing rental inspections for 10 years. I've been threatened, I had one property owner threaten to shoot me the next time I came on his property, I've had people file complaints against me. That body camera goes a long way to show exactly what took place in that situation. And, you'd be surprised, when they see me walk up with a body camera, they're not aggressive, because they don't want to be videotaped being aggressive. So it's also a tool to protect me. We've had, in, over the last 12 months, we had an inspector in Illinois that does the same job that I do, was shot and killed through a door. We've had Eli Boss, four or five months ago, was threatened with a two-by-four. So, the camera documents those things, so it provides my boss an understanding of how I'm doing my job, but also it's a protective mechanism for myself. If there's ever a situation, it's, you know, somebody files a complaint against me and says, "Rich Foley said A, B, C, and D." If I say, "No, I didn't," and I didn't do it, what better evidence than to have the chief be able to review the video and say Foley didn't say it? And then you're going to have that confidence of knowing that I'm doing my job because there's that quality assurance out there, and it's also protecting us.
Quick piggyback to that.
You have to come up to the mic. Sierra, you have to come up to the mic, please, thank you.
Sierra Peterson, 1207 South 22nd Street. Once that footage is transferred over to the police department, are they able to review it for anything other than things pertaining to that rental inspection? So if somebody makes a complaint about something in the same person, in the same property, a year later, can they go back and look at that footage for any, any sort of information behind the scenes for that? Or is it only for a complaint made about the rental inspection? So say, my inspection, I used it at my property. So say, a year down the road, something happens with my tenant, and you guys are like, "Hey, we need to look at that footage from inside the property." Can that be pulled for something later, or can it only be pulled for something related to inside, like, during the rental inspection?
I, what I can tell you right now is, if somebody comes a year down the road, there's no video.
May retention time comes, and if it's not a criminal investigation or a criminal investigation, a certain amount of time elapses and then it's...
And they would have to meet requirements?
Yeah, sorry.
You've got to come up here now, yeah.
They have the need requirements set out by the police department. If they would come, and, city clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, but if they come to the city clerk and say, "I need copies of this video," that is given to the police department, and it has to meet certain requirements that the police department has spelled out in their evidence. So if somebody comes in and says, "Hey, I want to blah, blah, blah," and that video is pertaining to that complaint, I can see them saying, "Yeah." But if somebody complains that, you know, you have a stolen motorcycle, I don't see them even knowing the video's there.
I do think we're getting in the weeds a little bit on, it's pertaining to, it's pertaining to inspections.
I don't think we are, I feel like it's a balance for some people.
Oh, sorry.
It could be used for both sides.
It could be a different conversation, I guess, is what I'm getting at.
That would be a conversation that I don't think the PD is ready to talk about, but it's, I wanted to bring up the fact that it's evidence.
Yeah.
It's treated as evidence. I can't modify, copy, I can't take a copy of the video and put it on YouTube, I can't take a copy of the video and share it with anybody. All I can do is go in, label it, view it, and that's it. Nobody else in my office can view it.
Yes, they would be able to use it as evidence if they requested it. If there's a criminal...
If it met the requirements under the police department, yes.
All right. Let's go back to the document that we got here for rental inspections. Is there any other questions from the folks that are here, comments from council? Nothing? Okay. We're at that point where, council, do you have any changes or amendments that you want to offer to the document, or?
Yeah, I would say, if there's questions, to reach out to the city to find out what they are, as opposed to watching Facebook, which doesn't necessarily have the accurate information. So, I think Rich is more than welcome to answer his phone during the day and answer these questions, but realistically, we could, we could what-if all night until tomorrow and still not have all the answers that people are going to want. I think addressing it directly with Rich, I'm telling you what, there's probably more protections on a rental home than there is on my own personal home at this point, from what it sounds like, so.
All right. Council, anything else? All right, I would entertain a motion to move this forward.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, last chance for any discussion on this.
Rich, I have a question. This is just a last minute, because you said you were working with IT and you're going to make it so people could register online and stuff. Once they do that initial registration, is there any way IT can set it up so it kicks out a reminder to those property owners that, "Hey, it's registration time," you know, with a simple email or something that way, especially in the beginning, people, because it'll, it'll take a while to remember to do this.
We are looking at every avenue we can to make this as simple as we possibly can. The, the problem, well, I can't say problem, the hurdle is money.
Yep.
There are, for example, is, Municity has a part of Municity called Community that civil, and it'll do all that, but it's eight grand more a year for us to tap into that. To, to track all that on our website would require third-party software.
Okay.
Which would require more funding for that website.
I think Councilmember Sealy's willing to go that route.
Yeah.
More, more funding for it.
Write it down.
The goal, the goal for the next couple of years, as this rolls out, is to have that yearly landlord meeting, and media blitz, mailings, the goal would be is like November, December, try to mail out...
Just to remind everybody.
A reminder to everybody. But the goal is, and we've talked about this quite a bit in our office, is part of our job is education. So, one of the goals is to have a yearly landlord, when the landlord, we used to have a landlord association, I met with them four times a year, and we would always have these discussions about that. The idea is to getting something like that, where every, once a year, we get all the landlords together, and we do the registrations, we do all that stuff. So then it takes a lot of the burden off of our office and Ginger and Karen, because we have to chase these properties down every year to get them to register. If I invite them all in for a big meeting, they don't do that.
Yep.
That's the thought, the idea behind it. Web page.
We'll talk to IT, too, because I don't see why they can't figure this out right now.
All right.
County reminder.
Okay. Any other thing else from council? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Schumers.
Yes.
Datterman.
Yes.
Sealy.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Curtins.
Yes.
All right. Any councilmembers have any updates, that all?
Congratulations to Krista.
Yes.
Congrats.
She's now a Mrs.
And a population increase in our community. Congratulations to the mayor and your child.
Yep, yep. Exciting.
Call the census.
We just went over 25,000.
Anything else from council? All right, we are adjourned.